Welcome to tonight's Sandusky City Commission meeting. Before our meeting begins, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Twine, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come before your throne of grace. We ask you for your blessings upon us with wisdom and guidance and understanding. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Presser, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
I would ask from Commissioner Poole, if you're going to make a motion, I'm asking for it.
Yes, make a motion that we excuse Commissioner Lockhart and Commissioner Murray.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, that motion is approved. I believe we're going to begin with audience participation. Anyone wishing to speak on items that are on our agenda tonight, step to the microphone, identify yourself, and we'll go from there. Before our first speaker begins, I need to back up. You can tell that you're being entertained tonight by a rugby. So I will back up and ask the commissioners, tell the commissioners that you have before you the minutes of our last meeting, and I would ask what your pleasure is with those minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I'm with it. We accept the minutes of the September 10th meeting and dispense with a formal reading.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. And hearing no objection, those minutes are approved. First speaker.
Commissioners and city manager, I want to thank you first for this opportunity to speak. My name is Sonya Vias White, and I am here on behalf of the Center for Peace for Understanding here in Sandusky, a nonprofit that is unaffiliated religiously or politically. I am also the proud daughter of immigrants, and I am also a proud American. I'm a proud Indian-American who loves that in this country I have the opportunity to be a little bit Irish on St. Patrick's Day, to enjoy mariachi on Cinco de Mayo, and also to celebrate Diwali by lighting dia lamps on Diwali, the festival of lights. But honestly, I have to say that in the last couple years, I have felt a sense of unease that maybe on Diwali, I can't wear my native or ethnic dress, or maybe I can't speak to my mom in her native language in public spaces. And that's unfortunate because my parents have contributed much to this country and their community. My dad was an engineer, and he helped build this country like immigrants in the past did, nothing sexy, water treatment plants. And both my parents also owned a small grocery store. And they are beloved by their neighbors. They contributed to their economy, to their schools. And I think that the resolution, the welcoming resolution that is before you today represents the spirit of my parents' contributions to this country. It validates the economic, cultural, and social contributions they have made, and I think it's important, and it would provide for a community without fear, a community where I'm not afraid to wear my ethnic clothes or speak my native language, even though I speak English just fine. And I think the most important piece about this is not just declaring this welcoming city, but also that it provides a framework for action. And I think that is the most important piece of this, the coalition of business, churches, community organizations like the Center for Peace through Understanding, coming together and creating a plan, inviting entrepreneurs, immigrants are entrepreneurs at higher rates than most other cohorts, attracting and retaining talent, and also just having the sense, I know the Center for Peace through Understanding had an international fest, maybe we could have a citywide international fest. I see so many possibilities. And so I wanted to thank you all and just recognize that last week was welcoming week, celebrated by many communities all across the nation and Ohio, and I hope that Sandusky will participate in that effort, and I wholeheartedly support the passage of the welcoming resolution. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Angel Cunningham. I'm here to speak on the rezoning of Putnam Street.
Angel, can you give us an address? We try to keep the addresses as part of our record.
It's on parcel 58...
No, your address.
Mine, 811 Forest Avenue, Sandusky, Ohio.
Thank you.
So we brought forth for our parcel to be zoned from residential to commercial. Right now, we have 100 fruit trees. The idea is to run two businesses off of it. One, my husband's an auto mechanic. We want to be able to put a building on there so that way he could do his part of his business, which is fixing vehicles, anything from two wheels to 18. We understand that is, you know, close to a school. That's why he runs on a by appointment only type of business, so that way it wouldn't interfere with a lot of people showing up, it wouldn't interfere with children around it. My part of the business is the fruit trees. I want to be able to put a building on there, show people how to take care of trees and be able to put trees in their own properties and be able to grow them, prune them and everything. The other part of that would be to show them how to canning. You know, a lot of people have lost the traditional parts of our lives, and to be able to do that and be able to teach people would be wonderful. And then on top of anything, anything that we weren't able to use for the canning or even to personally sell, I'd be able to put back into the community, give to people who don't have, and you know, fruits. We have apples, pears, peaches, plums, nectarines, cherries. Those are a lot of things that people around here can't afford to buy, even when they have food stamps, because the cost of it in the stores is outrageous. Now, I know a lot of people would be concerned because of noise levels. We've been there several times. The train running back and forth all day and all night is a lot louder than what my husband's air guns would be working on a car or anything else. I've had my radio out there, and I've had to turn it up just because of the train going by. All I'm asking is for the opportunity to switch us over to a commercial property, build our couple of businesses on there, and grow from there. We'd be able to hire people in, we'd be able to give jobs back to the community, but we'd also be able to support them in other ways. That's all I'm asking for, is the opportunity to be able to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council and managers, and my name is Samuel Prince, and I reside at 2202 Carl and Avenue in Sandusky. I'm a constituent of Sandusky after leaving New York over seven years ago. And the wonderful thing about New York, which I've always have seen, is that there's a whole entire plethora of people, not just races or background or ethnicities, but people. So as I had moved into Sandusky about seven years ago, I began to wonder sometimes, are we welcoming? And as I began to look, and as I began to observe the ways as to how we can be, I was told sometimes the fact that in many ways is how we can be welcoming, how we can be welcoming not only refugees, but also individuals who are looking for settlement. There is a tremendous amount of history in which the United States has, as far as resettling, as far as having people to be here within this country even though they're not citizens. I recall that my first trip to the Statue of Liberty and seeing that wonderful phrase in which it has, that we are welcoming to all, welcoming to people, it really urged me to think that as I am here, that is what we can be. The United States has a long history of not only given safety, but also protection for those who are fleeing countries of persecution, goes back into World War II and back up to now, whereby there is humanitarian efforts, which has always been given to those cities and towns and states which are open up to be welcoming. So I urge us, I urge you as a resident in Sandusky, that we do consider that, we do consider people, we do consider the fact that this could be a place of means of abode as far as where their whole entire lives are concerned. And Sandusky could be, could also learn and earn as far as where that rich environment is, as far as where diversity is.
Thank you. I want to take just a moment to remind the audience that if you're certainly welcome to speak on any issue that's on the agenda, that's what this portion is for. But following the audience participation, we are going to have a public hearing regarding the change of zoning request on Putnam Street. So as it is a public hearing, anyone here for that purpose will be able to hear, have their voice heard, so you don't need to, you don't need to jump up regarding that. And any other audience participation on agenda items? If not, we do have a public hearing scheduled tonight on the proposed rezoning of a parcel on Putnam Street, and I believe that Ms. Waddington, our chief planner, is going to provide us with some information regarding that.
Thank you, Mr. President, or Mr. Vice President, members of the commission. Larry and Angel Cunningham have applied for a zoning amendment to rezone their property to residential business. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow for automotive repair and growing of trees. The property is currently zoned single-family residential, and it is surrounded by both single-family residents and two-family residential zoning. The proposed zoning of roadside business permits all stores, services, dwellings, et cetera permitted in local business, plus retail businesses, motels, hotels, automotive services, repair garages, sale of vehicles and boats, nursery stock, garden, equipment, et cetera. The Cunninghams have maintained the property and have planted trees on the site since they have purchased it. The Planning Commission held a public hearing where concerns from neighboring properties were communicated. Staff recommended denial to Planning Commission because the proposed zoning would allow for uses that are not harmonious with and could be a nuisance to surrounding residential properties. Planning Commission voted to deny the request and forwarded their recommendation of denial to City Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waddington. As this is a public hearing, anyone here wishing to speak on this issue is welcome to go to the podium and identify yourself, name and address for our records, and we'll be glad to hear your voice.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ryder, and I reside at 1708 Mills Street, which is this parcel. There has been a natural hedgerow here, I'm told, for over 40 years. It was never included in anything. My husband retired from auto body repair and restoration on a clock and at home of 35 years. We don't want to hear our compressors anymore. We don't want to have backup machinery and the smells and the fluids and the Sundays where we're already turning up our radio to get over a train whistle we're not accustomed to because we don't live there. I did not enjoy my weekend as yesterday. The sound of the music coming from the backfield was like having a jamboree behind my home. I'm allergic to bees. We have bees. I can't afford a $10,000 EpiPen. They planted the fruit trees before finding out if they could get this adventure in their favor. They've knocked down the hedgerow. They said they wouldn't when they were here for offense. They crashed through it with a brush hog, and the dead trees are laying. My backyard view is now, was, trees, and is now a gaping hole with trees dying and a stack of multicolored, I'm assuming fertilizer and other chemicals in a stack tall as a garage. And the roof of houses on the other side of Putnam Street that you wouldn't have known were there when I bought the house a year ago to retire into, looking out at the second hole of the Mills Creek Golf Course. I'm shaking because my life's investment is halfway finished with restoring that home, and it's about to be something I don't want. And that's, that's all I need to say. It needs to remain residential. If you want to grow fruit trees and have a business, I think you should do it in your backyard and not everyone else's. You don't live there. I see a thing on here also while I'm up here about the corridor, and I have to go. And can I just say, let's not spend $2.8 million to please people on their way to the hospital and know the route when we have problems and blight all over the city that need addressed. And thank you, commission.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Willie Wilson, and I live in 1803 Putnam. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I guess I will. I'm against the car repair also. We want to keep it residential. In the first place, there was, there's only one way to get in, and that's down Putnam Street, off of Putnam. That's the only way, you know, like somebody, she spoke about the trains. Yeah, the trains at the end of the street, there's only one way to get in. And I would personally just like to, I've been there 52 years, and I would just personally like to keep it residential. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Angel Cunningham, 811 Forest Avenue. I know I spoke previously. The trees, we were going to plant them no matter what. We wanted fresh fruit for ourselves, we wanted it for our families, we wanted a future for our children. We have two boys. That is something that we were going to do no matter what. When we bought the property, we had already thought to try and get it zoned commercial. As for the hedgerow, we've already explained to everyone, we are going to knock down all of the smaller trees, all the smaller twigs. The bigger trees, they're going to stay, they're beautiful. One way or another, we are going to utilize it, whether we're able to do it as commercial and run our prop business the way we want, or I'm going to put a park on there. My whole idea is to be able to provide a future for my family and help the community. I just wanted to let everybody know. We are here to make it better, we're not here to destroy anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners. I live on 1806 Putnam Street. My name is Lily Nicholson. I lived there all my life. I'm 62 years old, been on that street 62 years. That street is so narrow that you can hardly let kids ride their bicycle up and down the street. That field across where she just bought, I lived at 181630 all my life. We was raised up down there, the dead-end street. All that's surrounded is railroad track, all that's surrounded is trees, trees. She talking about apple tree, pear tree, guess what? We used to play with apple trees and pear trees, it's all around there, and pear trees. Anytime you got one in the backyard, anytime you want to do it, you can go ahead and get you an apple or pear, even got strawberry. Used to love summertime. Big old strawberry, used to have a field day. As far as the noise concerned, yes, we got railroad tracks, yes, we got the railroad train. The railroad train used to help me. Man, used to wake me up for school every day. Now we're going to hear some more noise? I don't think that's right. That's not even fair to the little kids if they want to play baseball, basketball. What they got to do, duck and dive and run because of cars there? We don't know how many trucks coming down that street, tearing up out there on the street. The street is nice, why tear it up because of big old trucks? It's not fair. We got older people living on that street. They not all young, they older. Give them a break. That's nice that you want to do something for the community, but guess what? The community is already there. It's already taken care of. As far as apple and pear, go down there, run the railroad track. Far as trees concerned, we got so many doggone trees, I'm ready to get rid of mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Joe Cahy. I live at 1809 Putnam Street. I appreciate the lady wanting to start a business on Putnam Street. My problem is, the street is narrow, we don't have sidewalks. Kids that go to Mills School, they walk the street. And we had a business that was there before that was a garbage business, and we eventually got it off the street because of the truck traffic did not come in off Mills Street, they came up Putnam Street, created dust, all kind of environmental hazards and stuff. Like I said, I don't want to stop somebody from creating a business, but we just not keep that area residential because of the way it's built. Like I said, the street is not really prepared for business, trucks or any traffic, heavy traffic going down there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Larry Cunningham from 811 Forest Avenue. I understand everybody's complaining about the narrow street and the trees and everything like that. I've been there several times to help my parents out with the land itself, I forgot what you guys called it. But the big thing with all the trees, there's not really a lot of fruit trees there at the end of Putnam Tree Street. Whenever you go doors to the end of it, let's say if the kids were playing in the woods or so, because I grew up playing in woods and creeks, let's say you go about into woods, maybe five, 10 feet, it's just garbage. People are just dumping garbage there, and we constantly clean it up. We even reported to the police station a couple of times, found ID cards, it's still there. What is going on with the whole woods and stuff like that? When there's dead trees and there's things that need to be cleaned up, that's what's cleaned up there. With the noise and everything, I can understand everybody's complaint with the natural automobile business, there's a lot of business there, a lot of people going back and forth, noise early in the morning, late at night. But as my mom was explaining, Angel over there, it's an appointment set type of thing. Last place that he was at, when he was working, there was neighbors nearby, there was kids, dogs, everybody was welcome to say hello, ask questions about their cars, it was a real nice, open thing. If there was nobody appointed for that time period, nobody was working. And it was never real early in the morning or real late at night, it was just there to get the job done midday. And if there's kids out playing around, even us going there with our trailer to just mow the lawn and everything, there's constantly cars going pack back and forth with each other, with the kids. And honestly, my dad, he's a very nice person when he's behind the wheel trying to tow a trailer or tow a car. If there's kids nearby, he will park a mile away for those kids until they're done biking or away from the area that he's planning to drive through. And I mean, there was a cop sitting there just clocking speed, and it looked like he was about to come ask us questions because he parked right there at the end of Putnam Street where the school is, just about to turn down Putnam Street because kids were playing on their bikes right there. So with the narrow street, I can understand everybody's complaint there, but when neighbors and everybody's already constantly driving back and forth with it, and everybody talking about trucks, it's not going to be real big utility vehicles, it's not going to be everybody running through with bozers and giant trucks and stuff. Maybe you might have one car parked out there in the field or inside the shop itself. And I can understand the noise and everybody talking about the smell and the fumes and everything like that. You're not going to really get a lot of fumes because not much is really being burnt there. It's a really clean facility, the last time he had, he had to make sure that it was concrete, everything was cleaned up and real main, well-maintained. If it wasn't well-maintained or safe for kids nearby, then it wasn't to be done whatsoever. I grew up working in a shop with him, and there was never a time that he would let me get sick, hurt, or even the neighbors or dogs nearby. So I can understand everybody's concern there, and chopping out the little area over there with the trees, they have their own things in that area themselves. And my parents are trying to be nice with them, letting them know, it's in the property line, right in this area right here. You can kind of see their junk here and there inside the picture. So with the trees right here that they're chopping out, the reason we chop that out is so we can get our lawnmower through here and clean up that property a little bit other than where they had their junk, so we can keep the grass mowed down and well-maintained for the trees and everything.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments during this public hearing regarding this issue? If not, we, this item is on the agenda, so we will be dealing with it. We have one more comment. Mr. Zuloff.
Hi, I'm Mike Zuloff. I, as you might remember, I chair your planning commission. And I don't want to argue too much for or against, we've sort of had our say in that regard, but I'd like to make a couple of points to consider. Almost very little discussion that I've heard here is really terribly relevant to the question of whether the property should be rezoned. The rezoning would allow a whole bunch of uses under that zoning category, most of which are incompatible with, in the backyard of a residential area. In particular, auto repair shops are, historically have been, and are in ongoing conflict with their neighbors because of the cars and because of the noise. Mostly those businesses try to be good neighbors, and they tend to operate during normal business hours, but they also accumulate, whether they intend to or not, invariably accumulate lots and lots and lots of cars, and they wind up with not just a whole lot of stuff on the site, but they wind up co-opting street parking. So that's not why I, I can't speak for the rest of the commission, that's not why I voted against the application. I voted against it because it's just, there's no buffer there, you're looking at potentially incompatible uses cheek to jaw with a relatively stable residential neighborhood, and it would not improve things. And with full respect for what, and appreciation for what the owners and applicants are trying to do, there are alternatives to using that property. Much of what they, what was discussed tonight can probably be done with probably, you know, growing fruit trees is probably not going to result in a zoning violation, but the other potential uses surely would lead to conflict in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Any other comments? If not, I will declare this public hearing closed. We'll not turn to regular items of business. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the communication from staff regarding the various pieces of legislation we have before us? A motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Presser, before you present the various items on the consent agenda, I will ask if any commissioner desires to remove an item from the consent agenda and move it to the regular agenda. Mrs. Presser, will you present the consent agenda for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. Item A is an appropriation amendment, the fourth this year. Item B is the submission of a grant application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Healthy Hays Corridor Project. Item C are three separate resolutions to apply to the Erie County Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Camp Street Resurfacing Project, the East Monroe Street Resurfacing Project, and the West Monroe Street Resurfacing Project. And item D is a change order, the first and final, it's a deduct with Ed Burdo and Company for the Columbus-Scott-Campbell Streets. It's a deduct with Ed Burdo and Company for the Columbus Scott Campbell Streets Intersection Project.
Commissioners, you have heard these items on the consent agenda. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions A through D, as drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through D, whether it be in accordance with section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. Mrs. Presser, we poll the commission first on the motion.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
And Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Now on the, uh, now on the ordinance and, and resolutions.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
These ordinance and resolutions, uh, are approved. Mrs. Presser, will you present item number one?
Yes, item one is an ordinance amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone parcel number five eight dash zero zero two three six dot zero 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 from R 140, Single Family Residential District to Roadside Business District, and declaring that this ordinance shall take, shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, you've heard this communication. What is your, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
For the purposes of discussion, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance with section 13 of the city charter.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, uh, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Klein.
I want to thank everybody who came tonight to express your, um, position on this, um, proposed, um, planning, zoning planning change. To the Cunningham's, um, we look for people that want to open businesses in the community. Um, but I do believe that this probably is not the right area of town to do that. Um, so I will be voting no on this planning commission submission.
Additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Um, to the Cunningham's, I appreciate you guys wanting to bring business into Sandusky and I do hope that you find the correct parcel. Um, it, this is not, I'm sure that you would be, take care of the property wonderfully, but this is really a long-term decision for the property if you were to ever sell the property and what potentially could be on there. So I think for the, just, uh, keeping the neighborhood the way that it is and the support that they've had there, um, I'm, I have a hard time supporting the passage of this.
Any additional discussion, commissioners? I would ask our law director, Mr. Hayburger, if he would give us some guidance on, uh, the relevancy of our voting on this issue. I, it's very specific because a vote, uh, a vote, uh, in, uh, in support of this, uh, needs to be, needs to be unanimous. You, you can explain this much better than I can, Mr. Hayburger.
Well, it, this is somewhat confusing because the vote from planning commission was to deny, so it kind of muddies the waters here. So since the vote from the planning commission was to deny, we did the legislation and historically, this is how we've always done it, um, to do the legislation in the affirmative, meaning that you would allow the rezoning. So if you want to support the planning, um, commission's decision, you have to vote no on this legislation. If you want to reverse the planning, uh, commission's decision, you would vote yes. And it would need five votes in the affirmative to change that.
Thank you. Any further discussion, commissioners? If not, Mrs. Presser, will you poll the commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
No.
Mr. Poole.
No.
Ms. Twine.
No.
Mr. Brady.
No.
Ms. Lloyd.
No.
Mr. Lockhart.
No.
And now on the motion. Now, now on, now, now on the ordinance.
Yes. Mr. Waddington.
No.
Mr. Poole.
No.
Ms. Twine.
No.
Mr. Brady.
No.
Ms. Lloyd.
No.
Mr. Lockhart.
No.
That ordinance fails. Mrs. Presser, will you, uh, present item number two, please?
Yes, item two is a resolution proclaiming Sandusky as a welcoming and safe community for immigrants and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, you have before you this communication. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm, uh, real happy to support this. And if we do pass this tonight, we are, according to what I read over the weekend, the smallest city in Ohio to pass a welcoming city resolution. My bigger concern is I worked on the 2010, uh, campaign and that was for the census and I like what, I don't know who wrote this in our packet, did this ensure and encourage all persons, documents, citizens or not, to feel comfortable reporting census data? And that's critical for us for federal money going forward. So that's why I support it. And thank you for all your comments tonight. We'll poll.
Any additional comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I too want to thank, um, the comments for tonight. Um, I support this legislation. Um, Sandusky is a wonderful community and we do want to be open to all cultures, ethnicities and, and the like. So, um, we want to welcome anyone that wants to come here and live.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I also, uh, support welcoming people to the community. It's a wonderful place to live and, uh, we have a lot to offer and anyone that wants to move here to join in and help make us a better community, I support that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
Uh, it, it's a wonderful idea to issue a resolution to welcome people to the city, but, uh, and perhaps you discussed it right before I got here, but I just want to make clarity sakes that when we say, say safe and welcoming, that we're not providing a, uh, legal safe harbor. And so maybe Mr. Hayburger might want to address that, or someone on the staff might want to address that in reference to any immigrant that may come here and feels though there's some type of legal safe harbor there, just clarity sakes. I'm sure you know what I mean.
Mr. Hayburger, do you have comments on it?
Yes, through you, uh, Vice Chairman, and to Commissioner Lockhart's point, this is not creating a sanctuary city. So if there are people here legally and they arrest, and we arrest them, they will still keep following the normal procedures that we had, as we have now.
Thank you. That satisfy you, Commissioner Lockhart?
It does. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Discussion. Mrs. Presser, will you poll the commission first on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That resolution passes. Mrs. Presser, will you, uh, present item number three, please?
Yes, item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to make payment to Sand City LLC of Willoughby, Ohio for the reimbursement of an emergency generator and three automatic door openers for the new city hall administrative facility, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, you have before you this communication. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second. There's been a motion and a second discussion. This, Mr. Hamilton, I, I know that you are intimately involved with this, uh, process because I've spoken to you more in the last week than I have in either of our time here with the city.
I would be correct.
It's been a pleasure, though. Go ahead.
Um, through you, Vice Chairman, this agenda item is request an authorization to expend funds for the purchase and installation of a backup generator for the new city hall, along with power door openers. The new generatable power, all the core IT equipment, security equipment, and all the life safety equipment in the new city hall in event of any power outage. Um, we selected natural gas generator to remove the time constraints and runtimes of a standard diesel generator. The power door openers will be installed on the front two sets of doors on the Columbus side and the Washington, the one set of doors on the Washington Rose side. These are being added to, um, ease and assist with access to the building. To answer a couple of questions from last week that were brought up, then the generator will only serve the new city hall and nothing else apart from the new city hall. Um, and the door openers, um, they're actually outside the scope of ADE requirements, ADE requirements, scope, the, the size, the closing pressure and the clearance. Um, so therefore, this is an add-on for us. That's why we are providing them for the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Hamilton?
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
Stuart, um, I, I think there were some questions about, um, say we don't stay there, um, would that be something that would remain part of the building or something that we would take with us? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, the, the generator and the door openers for that case, they belong to us. So if we did move, yes, we could dismantle it and take us with it. It would not stay with the building.
Additional questions, commissioners? Presser, will you poll the commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Mrs. Presser, will you present item number four?
Yes, item four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to expend funds for the purchase of a muffin monster channel grinder for the Cedar Point Pump Station from JWC Environmental of Santa Ana, California, in the amount of $23,714.50, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, you have before you this communication. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion, commission.
Mr. Chairman, just one question.
Mr. Poole.
Uh, what's life expectancy of this?
Mr. Klein, I, I know you and I both know that answer, but I'm going to let you present it.
Sir, through Mr. President, um, the life expectancy on these, they recommend replacement in five years, but of course, uh, the life expectancy is a little bit longer, five to seven years.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Klein, my understanding, or my recollection, that we have several of these, uh, products, uh, throughout our system. I recall, uh, a few years ago, we replaced one in the, out in the Venice, uh, in the Venice High property.
Sir, Mr. President, uh, last year in 2017, we replaced one of the two that, uh, existed at the Venice Lift Station. Um, these things, like I said, have a five to seven-year life expectancy. The one that we're replacing today was put in in 2003 and rebuilt in 2013, so it's well past its useful life.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any additional questions? Mrs. Presser, will you poll the commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
And now on the, is this an ordinance?
Yes.
On the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular items of business and...
Signage.
Item number five.
Yes, thank you for asking. Item number five is a resolution.
I wonder why all these people were still...
Declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed city hall signage and wayfinding project, exterior signage, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, you have before you this communication. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a, and a second. And prior to the discussion, I will tell you now why I wanted to ignore that item. Because I can't, I don't get to play on this issue. Uh, this is, that is a product that a company that I own may very likely be providing pricing on, so I will be refraining from the discussion, uh, and the vote on, on this issue. But I would ask the rest of you to, uh, proceed with your discussion. And Mr. , Mr. Lasko, you're, you're the originator of this legislation. Perhaps you can share with us exactly what it is you're doing here.
Yes, through you, Mr. Vice President, members of the commission. Um, back in June, uh, the commission approved a design contract with RLR Associates out of Indianapolis, uh, who is undertaking the exterior signage design on behalf of the city and the interior wayfinding package, uh, along with providing a messaging schedule and location map. Um, we are, uh, looking to, uh, seek permission, uh, tonight just on bidding the exterior package. Uh, we'll be approaching commission, uh, in the future with permission to bid the interior package. Um, but in the documents provided to commission, uh, they provided some, uh, good design documents of, uh, the exterior signs that will be provided on the main exterior canopy, along with all the window decals, uh, and door decals to be provided on the, uh, windows along Columbus and some of the staff entrance doors and rear exit doors, uh, in the back alley. Uh, so again, what we're seeking tonight, uh, is permission to bid the exterior sign package, uh, for the city hall facilities.
Commissioners, uh, questions for Mr. Lasko? Or any, any discussion regarding this issue?
May, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Um, this is, it costs, there's $15,000 cost involved in asking for somebody to bid on it? Is that what I'm reading? Maybe, I think I misunderstood this.
Yes, through you, Mr. Vice President, to Commissioner Poole, uh, we're, uh, again, just seeking permission to bid tonight, uh, to go out to bid. Um, but the anticipated not to exceed number on bids that would be brought back to commission would be a not to exceed $15,000, which is based on a cost opinion and some contingency items and advertising costs. So that's the expected amount we anticipate to be below when we bring a contract for consideration in the future.
Okay. Would have been simpler to say that's all the signs will cost.
There you go.
That would have been, I'm slow. I'm a little slow. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, will you poll the Commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Epstein.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Epstein.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Now that does conclude our regular items of business. And we turn to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Commission Vice President Brady, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I will start with the donations. A donation was made by the Friends of the Greenhouse for stamped concrete and two engraved granite blocks to be inlaid in the sidewalk south of the Boy with the Boot. The approximate cost is $1,350. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved.
Thank you. Moving on to police and fire. The Sandusky Police participated in the recovery walk on September 15th, and the Erie County Senior Triad on September 20th. Also, the Sandusky Fire Department participated in various community events, including the Community Impact Officer Jeff Danovich attending the Erie County Triad Health and Safety Day, and various officers working the popcorn wagon. For the Finance Department, the city successfully sold its $4.946 million various purpose notes on September 19th, 2018, to Key Bank Capital Markets from Cleveland, Ohio. The net interest cost was 2.119%, and the notes will mature in October of next year. Also, the city was awarded the Auditor of State Award with Distinction for the 2017 Audit. The Auditor of State Award is presented to local governments upon completion of a financial audit that is in compliance with numerous accounting and auditing requirements. Information is attached, but a representative from the Auditor of State's office will be presenting the award formally at the October 9th, 2018 City Commission Meeting. Also, just a reminder that the next scheduled Finance Committee meeting is Friday, October 19th, at 7:45 a.m. Again, that's Friday, October 19th, at 7:45 a.m. Moving on to the Public Works Department, there are two fall cleanup opportunities available at no charge to city residents. Drive-through drop-off day will take place this Saturday, September 29th, at the Shelby Street Boat Launch Overflow Parking Lot, and we are still in desperate need of volunteers to lend a helping hand with this event. Residents are welcome to drop off yard waste at Barnes Nursery, 1630 Camp Road Huron, on Saturday, October 6th, and Sunday, October 7th. For further details, please contact 419-627-5884. So in addition to the drive-through drop-off day on the 29th at the boat ramp, residents can also drop off on the 6th and 7th at Barnes Nursery Yard Waste. Again, and the number to reach out is 419-627-5884. Also, due to new EPA requirements, water distribution crews will be implementing an extensive notification process to affected properties when water main breaks occur after October 1st. In some cases, they may be required to offer water filters or replacement of private lines for an additional cost. Also, on Monday, October 15th, Republic Service has elected to remove the recycle bins at the Service Center on Cement Avenue in Coannis Park on First Street. We're diligently exploring our options for residents who have used, have been a free service for the last five years, and are looking at opportunities hopefully to extend the presence if possible, and if not, to find more long-term solutions to ensure that our residents have the opportunity to continue recycling. Also, there will be a green ribbon cutting ceremony to formally present the new and improved Garland Avenue to the community on Thursday, October 11th, at 5:30 p.m. Again, that'll be a celebration of the recently completed project, which looks wonderful for those who haven't seen it, on Garland Avenue on Thursday, October 11th at 5:30. Also, staff has been notified that the city will be awarded a Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant that was applied for in May through the National Forest Service. This will allow for installation in 2019 of approximately 270 trees on city properties or within rights of way that were included in the application. In addition, staff will finalize our list of fall 2018 tree plantings by the next Commission meeting, so we're very excited and thankful for that grant as well. Moving on to community development, the Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation is under contract to purchase and demolish the property located at 2131 West Forest Drive. The current property owner, Kim Schafter, received a $38,000 loan in 1998 through the rental rehabilitation loan program. The current amount owed to the city is $21,321.45. To effectuate the transfer, this mortgage will need to be released. City staff is recommending approval of the release because the property is condemned, has multiple other liabilities, and would have had to have been demolished by the city had the Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation not stepped in. The cost of the demolition will be a savings to the city, as it will be entirely borne by the land bank at the county level. Also, the former Hoppers-Sonoco site, on September 18th, the city completed the transfer of these two sites to the Forest of Sandusky, an LLC who will be constructing a medical marijuana dispensary on the site. The new owners have already received a foundation permit to start constructing the facility, which has commenced. The city is in the process of reviewing other elements of construction drawings in hopes of fully approving in the next few weeks. The proceeds of that sale will go into the city's fund that was established by this committee, the Real Estate Development Fund. Also, for the Planning Department, a year-one final report is being finalized and being presented for release soon. A presentation will be given on year-one outcomes of proposed year-two projects for the October 9th City Commission Meeting. Staff will look for Commission support of year-two projects at the October 9th meeting. I believe this is in reference to the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative. So those are, so we've completed the first year of the five-year program for the Neighborhood Initiative. Also, I know this was something that Commissioner Waddington raised at the last meeting, and Commissioner Poole has a follow-up question on. We worked out basketball pool wrapping on Orlando Pace Park and Lyons Park. We're using the materials that we have in-house to wrap both the basketball courts at both those parks this year, taking a look at how it goes. We chose to remove them several years ago because they kept disappearing, and so we're hopeful that they will stay, and they're looking at some different options for how to keep them up this year, with the hopes of having all the basketball courts padded again in the spring. Also, sculpture on loan locations were attached in the manager's report for review. This is also something that came up at the last meeting. The Lang Trust has graciously decided to fund and handle all of the logistics of the year-long program, with help from the renowned Midwest Sculpture Initiative. The sites received unanimous support from the Sandusky Public Arts and Culture Commission at this time, assuming that the Commission has had a chance to review the sites that were proposed. We'd like to ask for a motion for Commission support on the proposed locations.
I make a move to support the proposed locations.
Is that a motion? We have a motion, we have a second. A motion and a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
I haven't seen them. The locations.
They were in the packet, right?
They're attached to the manager's report.
Okay. It's fine.
We have a motion and a second for that issue. Any discussion regarding that?
Angie, did you want to give a brief description of where, maybe, the locations are?
I could walk through them for the public.
I wonder, Ms. Poynter, if you would at least detail them for anyone's benefit that did. Down through that York manager's report.
I'm sorry, don't have them to put on the screen for the public, but the first one is Chesapeake Lofts. It's the northeast corner of the loch, kind of where you walk around. It's the northeast corner, there's a green area there. So it's on the side of the building that's next to Jackson Street here. The next location is within Shoreline Park, north of the pavilion. The next is the Sandusky Library. It's just south of the library. I believe it'll be up in the Boulevard area off of Columbus Ave. The next is in the, it's a little triangle park at the Central Ave-Daketer Street-Adams Street intersection. The next is in West Park, which is the southwest corner of Columbus Ave and Monroe Street, right on the corner. The next is in East Park, which is the southeast corner of Columbus and Monroe. The next is at the Sandusky Greenhouse, which is, it'll be just north of the building, so right at the corner of Elm Street and Franklin Street. And the last location is the Triangle Park at the intersection of Adams Street-Hancock Street Huron Avenue. And just for the public who may be listening, again, this is just a sculpture on loan program, so they're just temporary, they won't, they're not permanent, it's a temporary location.
Thank you, Ms. Poynter.
You're welcome.
You've, I have looked at those sites, and you have provided a great cross-section throughout the community for those, and I think it's a great opportunity for it. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
A project of this magnitude, to which we have devoted as much money as we have to this, I believe should have been a presentation for the entire community to see. I'm just, I'm not uncomfortable with it, I don't really care where you put these. I do have an opinion about it, about what you do, but that's a personal opinion. As a Commissioner, I'm prepared to accept the decisions that you make for these things, but this should have been on a screen that showed what the sculptures were likely to be, why you thought they belonged there, how it helped the neighborhood, some conversation about the work you did with the neighborhood to talk to them about what you're doing, and none of that exists here, okay? I object to the way this is done, and I'm gonna vote no, not because I don't, because I have an opinion about where you put them, but I do not support the way you spend this kind of money on major projects and don't include, and don't do that. I think there should have been a project, something here. And these little dots on this map, don't do it for me, and maybe I'm asking too much of you, but that's where I'm at on the, on the project.
Commissioner, Commissioner Poole, your comments regarding the money that we spent, I'm not certain, but I...
I'm talking about all arts, not the, I realize these were donated, I got that. I'm talking about this entire program...
So to be clear, we didn't spend any money on this?
We didn't spend any money on this project, I agree. The amount of money we put on the arts program dedicated to this, the fact that we got a donation of a little piece of it is fine, but I believe that the community should be much more involved in accepting and getting behind this. And it can't be done with us deciding, with whatever, the consultant you brought in tells us what we need, where we ought to put it, and the community should just sit back and go, oh yeah, thank you, that's wonderful. I don't believe in that kind of a process for this community. I believe the community should be brought more into this, and if you think I'm demanding or asking too much, okay, but that's where I'm at, and that's where I'm gonna be going forward about this. It needs much more community involvement and allowed in, and I'm not just gonna be grateful because a group of whoever, those of you who support whatever group, have told me I should like this. Simple as that. I'm gonna vote no, just as a matter, just to make that point, and that, for that reason only.
Mr. President, will you poll the Commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Chairman? I will support this for the locations, but I will say that I do have one concern about how much control we're going to be giving others that are donating art, and this is a great program, I'm very excited about it, but just giving us a red dot on a location, I'm a little nervous to see actually what sculpture is going there, and making sure that it's positioned the right way, the right direction. There's a lot more detail that goes into something like this that we're actually putting out for the first time for our community to see, so this isn't really enough information, but to keep things going, I'll support it this time, but like, we need to have more detail, more information, and thank you to Lang Trust for doing this project, but we do need to make sure that we're accepting it in a way that we're getting the right product and the right placement.
Mr. VP?
Mr. Lockhart?
I assume at some point, since we did see it today, that the staff's gonna bring it forward and let us see it somewhere along the line before it goes up, before all the statues go, maybe, or have more pictures or something along those lines?
Through you, Mr. Vice President. We can do whatever you guys would like. At the last meeting, we, that you at least wanted to know where the art would be located, but did not care what the art was going to look like. I believe that was stated, so we have examples of what will be coming, what they are loaning out to different communities, so we can definitely get that information to you.
Yeah, just for clarity sakes on my part, since I asked, you know, art is in the eye of the beholder, you know, so for us, or really, to sit up and say what it should or shouldn't be, I think it's more of a, sort of a public process or a committee's process of looking at different things. I mean, you know, some people may be offended by Spencer Tunic because he takes certain types of photographs, or some people are loving of the, you know, Da Vinci painting, and some people don't, some people are more Salvador Dali, that's, you know, so it's all subjective, it just depends on who, what, and where. I think, I think more so is to, kind of, soften the blow to let people know what's coming forward. I think that's kind of what we're looking at here. At least that's where I'm looking at, let me just say that.
Additional discussion? If not, Mr. President, will you poll the Commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
That motion passes. Mr. Wilkster, I want to give the Commissioners opportunity to ask you questions regarding your city manager's report, if there are any questions regarding...
I still have.
Oh, yeah, he's got more to go yet, doesn't he?
I thought you were done. No, no, we just were midpoint. That was just, I asked for a resolution, I made the mistake of asking for a resolution on something I don't think we actually needed to ask for a resolution on, but, so, duly noted, not to do that again. But, so, just a little bit on the public art plan. The public art plan actually hasn't been brought to the City Commission for its approval yet, because it needs to still be vetted by the Public Arts and Cultural Commission, which was appointed by the City Commission. The Lang Trust donation happened before, and was actually presented in full to the Public Arts and Cultural Commission. I actually don't think, I think trouble determined that we didn't need any work from the City Commission on that, but it was brought up in the last meeting that you guys did want to potentially sign off on locations, so as a courtesy, we wanted to bring that to you. But ultimately, I want to say that there's a pretty detailed process, probably the recommendation will be to be handled at the Arts and Cultural Commission level for the things like Commissioner Lloyd talked about with where art should be placed, and so ultimately, we do think there'll be a robust process, and that there has been several public meetings, and open public meetings of the Arts and Cultural Commission just to get to the adoption of the plan, and I think a lot of the concerns that Commissioner Poole or Commissioner Lloyd raised will be addressed in that planning process, and ultimately, still being, you know, debated and talked about by the Arts and Cultural Commission, and then will come to this Commission at the end of October, so I think the concerns that you have will ultimately be addressed, and we do think it'll be a plan with a lot of public process, and they'll have a lot of things laid out for things like where things should be located or taken into account, but that, that Commission is appointed by you ultimately to be advisory on those decisions, and anything that would require legislation from the City Commission will of course still come to the City Commission, but I just wanted to make sure that there's a sense of what would or wouldn't, because ultimately, I actually think this is something that probably wouldn't have gotten to this level, but I think you guys would have a higher comfort level once the plan has been adopted and the Arts and Cultural Commission has signed off on these things, so, but we're happy to continue that discussion ultimately, and go from there. So, I've gotta refine my spot here. Okay, so the regular planning commission meeting is scheduled Wednesday, September 26th, at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor conference room, and a landmark commission meeting is Wednesday, September 26th, at 4:00 p.m. in the first floor conference room. And with that, I'm concluded with Murray Marks for this evening. Oh, I have one more. Late arrival from Kelly. So October 4th, at 5:30 p.m., we are having a community celebration and opening of the Erie Boulevard Parklet, that's at the corner of Cleveland Road and Erie Boulevard, so the Neighborhood Initiative, it's actually the first completed project of the Neighborhood Initiative, was to take that abandoned bank site and to reuse the roof structure, and to create a nice pocket park for that area. I think that's turned out really well. That's also the day that will kick off the kind of tour of the accomplishments of the first year of the Neighborhood Initiative at the Rotary Club at noon. We want to invite everybody at 5:30 p.m. on October 4th to the corner of Erie Boulevard and Cleveland Road, to celebrate the first year of the Neighborhood Initiative and to get to know that new park. So with that, I conclude with Murray Marks for this evening.
Questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I'd like to ask, this recycling, we're gonna close both recycling areas in the city of Sandusky, I'm concerned that this is gonna cause more illegal dumping, and then we're trying, I thought at least, to encourage recycling, we've got receptables all over, you know, community parks and downtown and that, so what's the, is this forcing us in to go to a one-bid hauler? Is that the direction that we're heading? Because without them two bins, that equals, I thought, 5,000 residents for each recycling center, correct? It made 10,000. We had a call with the county, and I used to be involved with that years ago, so where are we going with this? And then who made the, I guess, that decision to pull these, was that...
I can speak to that, yeah. So through Commission Vice President to Commissioner Waddington, this was something that Director Klein brought to my, brought to my attention, and that we're both very concerned about. We wanted to let the Commission know in advance, and let the public know in advance, that there is a chance that those cans, or recycling bins, could be pulled on October 15th. The way that that contract works is Republic believes they have the ability to cancel it with notice, and they've given us that notice, and there's a lot of, this is actually a trend in that the resale market for recycled goods has dropped, and therefore, the cost, it was actually a service that was provided to us for free under our initial contract with Foltz, which ultimately was replaced when they were purchased by Republic Services, and Republic continued to honor the contract, although, again, they believe there's a notice provision for their ability to cancel it, but when the market shifted, they stated that their losses had risen to a pretty significant amount monthly, and told us that we would need to either cover the cost of those losses, or alternatively, that they would exercise their ability to cancel it. We do intend to continue to talk to them between now and October 15th, to see if there's a way, at least on an interim basis, to keep those open, but we do also agree that this is a potential time to look for a longer-term solution that makes sure that every resident has access to recycling. There are three or four different ways that we could do that, but the cost would be approximately $100,000 a year to the city to keep these two open, which we think is an exorbitant surface, service viable while we explore everything from how to make sure this is provided to every resident in the city, et cetera. So Erin, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, but, but we were very disappointed, this was surprising.
Um, can we also make sure that we're looking for citywide, commercial, residential, everything? It's something that we need to be working on.
We, uh, through, through the commission, Vice President to Commissioner Lloyd, I, I actually think, and Erin agrees, that that is probably the best long-term strategy is to, this was always, we thought, an interim step to that, and so ultimately, we need to look at how we can ensure, right now, every provider in town is required to offer, at least residentially, recycling, but it's not mandatory for residents to purchase recycling, and so we want to look at different ways that we can ensure that every resident does indeed have, have access and is utilizing, uh, curb-side recycling services.
So we may want to get even more detailed, because I don't believe all of them actually do. Some of them just say, well, we recycle about 60% of what you throw in your garbage, so that's not really good enough for how we should be taking care of our community.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-up question. Uh, I think this is gonna be a red flag if we go down this direction without having some more input on this. Just my opinion, because I've been involved in this in the past. Uh, I'm worried about the illegal dumping, and we're gonna fill the landfill up at what cost of the tipping fees and that, you know, for us to take that to the landfill. And, uh, Republic, I thought they had a problem in the city of Euron, they had to jack the rates way up. Was that because of the cost from the recycling, or...
Uh, through the commission president to the vice president, I don't know, Director Klein, if you know, but we, we do know there's some volatility in that market right now, and, and, um, we, we will absolutely look over the next few weeks at what we can do to continue the existing service to the extent possible. Um, and until we talk to Republic, we don't know what those options are, but we also think with urgency and with this commission's direction, it is the time to look at longer-term options as well to ensure that we have those in place at some point, too.
Can I have a follow-up on that?
Sure.
Can we include, like, we got roughens, and there's like three or four other haulers of City Sandusky? I mean, I don't want to have them pick a paper up on Wednesday or Thursday, I'm out of business now. I think that discussion should occur, and I don't, you know, I don't know who's gonna do it, but, uh, at least include them in the process.
Mr. Whoopser, I, I applaud your, your concept of going back and reaching out to Republic on this issue. I think, you know, it's important, this is a disappointment, I think, to every commissioner here, and should be a disappointment to everybody, every resident of the city, to lose our ability, even though it was a small ability to recycle, it still was the ability to recycle. And, and I have read their contract, and, and it expires on April the 28th, and I, and I understand the legalese allows them to, uh, to, to escape from that, uh, by giving us a notice as they have, but I would certainly hope that, that you and, uh, Mr. Haberger will go back to them and try to negotiate them back to the table. Uh, you might point out to them that we value them as our, as our service provider for, you know, for the city. Uh, and that, uh, you know, that, uh, that, that, this period of time will give us, uh, perhaps a time to formulate a plan going forward. It's going to take us longer than 30 days to figure out not just what we're gonna do with recycling, but how, you know, how we're gonna, what, in what aspect we're gonna offer this to... So, so thank you for doing that. I don't think that, I don't think that needs a motion, I think, I think you got your, you got your walking order there.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Yeah, just in your conversations with them, uh, I'm not sure how many, how many options we have with the market. I understand, and please verify, that the Chinese have, uh, cut back by 50% on the amount of trash that they will accept now. There's a lot of overriding things going on in the country, dealing with trade with various countries, and, and, uh, they are the biggest receptor of our, uh, recycling. And if they've, uh, announced, at least I heard on the news that they recycle, they had stopped, they were cutting back 50%. So that's why they haven't got money over, they can't do it, so.
Market fluctuation.
So our options are minimal. I do have one other question.
Sure.
Are you done with that subject? If you would. Um, appreciate if the law director would expand on the, his concept regarding our involvement in the arts program. He indicated that, I should say, the manager indicated that, uh, perhaps he did, they did not need to come to us to discuss this arts issue that we just did a bit ago. I just need to know what the legal position is, so I know where we're at and what to expect.
To you, Mr. Vice President, Commissioner Poole, I believe the issue was, um, the selection of the sites, and the, that was the whole purpose of the ad hoc committee, was to discuss these types of matters, make those types of decisions, and move forward. And, I mean, I'm not sure what, um, decisions other than financing of these, uh, projects that the commission would be legally required to hear. Now, the difference between being legally required to hear and what should be presented to be properly vetted are two different stories.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not s- and we can, you can get into this later. The concept of an advisory committee, the word is meant to encompass everything they do, I think. Now, what you're determining between legal and illegal, I'm not certain, but for, uh, practical purposes, committees we appoint, other than covered by state law, given the various authorities, they are advisory. So advisory means whatever you do, you bring back to us. And that's kind of how I interpret it, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I think that exceeds just approving finances. So just research it further and consider, but from, that's my perspective on this. It's an advisory committee, so they come, they advise us what they decided, and we go whether or not we agree or not, so.
Through the commission president to the vice president, uh, I absolutely agree. I don't think that any legislative authority of the city commission has been transferred to the Arts and Cultural Commission. I think that the temporary placement of a piece of art on public property doesn't rise to the level of requiring city commission legislation, was what was being stated. But if we were spending $10,000, or if we were, uh, giving a longer-term lease, or permanent encroachment, or sale of property, of course, that would have to come to the city commission. But all of that being said, I think that was the point that I was making, was that, whatever rights the city commission has, or authority the city commission has, of course, would not be usurped by staff or by, uh, Arts and Cultural Commission, but instead, just to make the point that there will be plenty of mechanism ultimately for how these projects get vetted, both by the public, the Arts and Cultural Commission, the city staff, and the city commission, but we're still premature to the larger plan being adopted. And ultimately, when that plan gets adopted, I think it will lay out much more clearly how to handle the commission of, the selection of, and the type, and the placement of public art or donations that are accepted or not accepted from that point forward. But we, I absolutely was not under the impression, and I apologize if I made it, that any legislative authority that is with this body would be transferred to the advisory commission.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopser.
Mr. Chairman, let me suggest, you don't have to apologize. This kind of thing happens where you're trying to get something done, and occasionally you'll, you or, or a committee will go, uh, thinking they're doing the right thing, and will have a difference of, of opinion about it. Uh, I fully understand that the temporary use, temporary assignment of things can be done by the, by the, uh, city manager, I'm fully aware of that. I would suggest that, uh, unless these are, um, pieces of, uh, statues that I can pick up and move around, and they're only gonna be there for two weeks or a short period of time, temporary is a stretch. And in terms of doing business with harmoniously between the commission, at least this commissioner and staff, uh, I keep track of the number of times that you're walking the line and doing things without going through the commission that the citizens elected us to do. Now, the difference between the, the hook that you buried in the dirt down the street, and what's being put up on the, in, in these temporary, uh, art that's been donated, I'll look and see when you get them up, whether or not they look temporary. But if you're putting up something that's substantial, that's gonna be there for six months or a year, it's hardly temporary. I mean, it's only, it's, that's relative. And to, uh, not come to us, I'm gonna say, well, why didn't you? Or something significant to that. Putting up a sign in a park for, for a week, two weeks, that's a different story. And maybe I have the wrong impression of what these sculptures are. I was under the impression that was pretty much substantial and gonna be very impressive, and, uh, wait and see. And I, and I'll be happy to drive around and go, gee, I was wrong, these turned out to be, uh, very temporary, they're movable, they're on wheels, you can roll them around anywhere you want, and I, and I just spoke too soon. If that's the case, I will do so. Thank you.
Well, I, I think, I think that what our city manager indicated is that we, we are feeling our way along in this process, and that, that staff and the city manager, neither of them have any, any, uh, any intention of taking any authority away that belongs to this commission and taking away from this commission. Uh, and, and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Poole, and, and I think that going forward, we will probably see more detail and, and more, uh, and, and more specificity with this going forward. And, and I, Mr. Lockhart's, uh, comment on arts in the eye of the beholder is exactly right. Perhaps the concept of temporaries in the eye of the beholder also. I, I think something that is not drilled into the ground or, or poured in concrete is, is, is temporary. And if it sits there for a year or two, and it's movable, to me, it's still temporary. To you, you're thinking in terms of a week or two. I'm thinking in terms of a year or two. So we are...
Is that kind of like the Keller building was temporary?
It, it is, it is gone now, I will say that.
Yeah. That's the point.
Additional comments?
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Lockhart?
You're, you're, you're correct on that point, that, you know, art could be temporary depending upon how it's placed, but, and, and I don't want to beliger this point because we've gone on to it for so long, but there's a, you know, there's a thing called an installation, and that installation could be a year, and that's temporary. Could be six months, could be a month. I mean, if you go to any museum in the world, you'll see that there's things called an installation. And that could be a major exhibit, could be a small, excuse me, a small exhibit, but the length of time is determined by the popularity of the exhibit generally, or, you know, what it may be, uh, it may be traveling, it may be, there's various reasons why the timeframe could be, uh, different from other things. So I can point to you real quickly, in Cleveland, they have a very popular exhibit at CMA, which is Cleveland Metropolitan Art Museum, and they have a very, very popular exhibit that's been there for months. And people are paying quite a bit of money to get there, super popular. Um, there are places that are in New York, or even small cities where they install things for a period of time. It's based upon the ability for the public to see it, the, a, a mass number of people to see it and enjoy it for a period of time, and then it moves on. You know, just like certain art collections, they're in a city for a period of time, and then they move on. So it's all, it's all relative. That's the beauty of art. You know, nothing's set in stone, nothing is, is determined by one person, it's just by, you know, looking at it and the love of it. Enough said.
Additional comments or questions for the city manager? Mr. Presser, I'd like the record to reflect that during, uh, Mr. Whoopser's city manager report, we lost 93% of our audience. Mostly the people that stayed are being paid to stay.
It's a filibuster.
We now turn to old business. Any items of old business?
Under old business, I move the city manager to get more interesting things to say.
Any items of old business? We will turn to items of new business. Any items of new business that a commissioner would like to bring up? Hearing none, we will turn to audience participation on any item.
Uh, my name's Timothy Work, I live at 409 52nd Street, and this is kind of after the fact that I wasn't realizing that the resolution for the Welcoming Center was gonna be approved, I thought it was gonna be discussed. So I should have spoke before, but if you don't mind, I hate to waste this good little thing I made up today, so. I'd like to express first my appreciation and compliment the efforts of all who have contributed to the outstanding bi-sentennial of our city. But I am here tonight to express my support of the welcoming, salute, welcoming resolution presented by Sony and the Center for Peace through Understanding. I've been proud of, enjoyed interactions with, and felt that the diverse makeup of Sandusky is one of our greatest assets. Diversity should be treasured, should be celebrated, should be made known, should be viewed as a strength, and now we have the opportunity to make it more official. People of all heritage and origins should be made to feel welcomed here if they are trying to better their lives for themselves and their families. I believe we are on the correct path, and by welcoming people of different cultures, we will further the growth and betterment of Sandusky. This attitude can only add to the attraction and growth of our community culturally and economically by new business ventures, homeownership, and new consumers for existing business. While this is a step in the right direction, in my opinion, it is only a paper with words on it. To make this resolution effective and bear fruit, we'll take efforts to check and possibly change preconceptions, attitudes, and behaviors. It is a global world now, and we here in Sandusky, Ohio, have a golden opportunity in front of us today. I understand that there are many factors and considerations of which I may not be aware of, and the commissioner is, the commissioner may be. I yield to your judgment. I personally feel that benefits from adopting and utilizing this resolution far outweigh any risk. Thank you for your attention and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Work, and, uh, that, as you know, that, uh, that legislation passed unanimously, so I think I can comfortably say we agree with you.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. Haven't been here in a while, I have a lot of catching up to do, but I'll try to shorten it up. Uh, in the paper, it said we did abandon the petition. We did not abandon the petition. By the time it was decided by Mr. Hank with his discretion to not accept the petitions because it did not start with be it ordained by the citizens of Sandusky, we ran out of time. We're still dealing with it. But I would like to say that we probably could have had three times as many signatures than what we got if the people in this city were registered to vote. People were coming up all the time to us wanting to sign a petition, but they are not registered to vote, and I think that's a really important thing for the citizens here. They, if you don't register to vote, you don't have a voice in this kind of thing. It was also stated that we were abusing the process of the petition. I pledge allegiance to that flag, and that, underneath the rap of that flag, I have the right to bring a petition to the governing party if I feel that they are taking advantage of the power they wield. It is my American privilege to create, collect signatures, or sign a petition legally, safely, without persecution, and without retribution. That's what makes this country what it is. And, uh, as far as contacting the commissioner in question, she tells everyone her opinion, we know her opinion, we don't need a face-to-face, she knows our opinion. It was stated in the paper that seems to be a lot of hanky, hanky-panky going on in the parking garage. So Mr. Whoopser, or Mr. Whoopser should know, that's another reason why no one wants to park in there. That can't have started after you put in the great big bright lights. Uh, but I was asked this week by a gentleman, if there's gonna be a designated area where people could go have sex in their vehicles and then have a legal cigarette. So I told him I would bring it to the commission, because they won't come and say it themselves. So I just put it out there. But, um, I just wanted to say, this was a interesting meeting tonight, there was a lot of people here, it was good to see that. My big concern with the prop, problem with that business on the property was, you can't maintain the streets we have. That street's gonna have everything from motorcycles to 18-wheelers on it, you won't be able to maintain it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Anyone else? Audience participation? I see no one going to the microphone. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. VP, you should allow the city, allow the city manager to clear his reputation that he was not involved in hanky-panky in the parking garage.
Motion on the second, we are adjourned.
I have no idea.